Okay. I'll start that again. Good afternoon, everyone. It's 1:01 PM, April 5th. Regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. This is Commissioner Mudge, and we have Commissioner Fiedler and Marcela with us. And first on our agenda is an approval of the agenda. I've put the agenda in our chat here. We have about six new items of business and a public hearing item. Do I have any changes on the agenda?
Yay!
None for me. Sarah, you might just want to post that again because I think people joining late can't see the earlier chats.
Oh, good to be reminded. Yep, I will do that. Let me copy that. Hold on a second. Okay. Okay, great. Do I have any changes or removals of items on the agenda? And if not, I will entertain a motion for approval.
No changes.
I will make a motion that we approve. Sorry, no changes for me. I will make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second, the approval.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thanks. And moving into community informational items from commissioners. Commissioner Marcela, do you have anything for us today?
I do not today. I guess the only thing quickly is that we're getting ready to put out the RFP for the transit planning study. And so I'll be working to gather some partnerships to go through that process with. So if anyone is interested, please send them my way so that we can make sure that we get all of our bases covered.
Great. Commissioner Fiedler?
Maybe just a note, I think people may be aware, but we've been working on a county manager position description as well as a job posting for a new human resources manager for the position. So just a heads up for the community, those will be going out and we'll be posting those as broadly as we can.
Great, thank you, commissioners. I would just like to take the opportunity to remind folks, if you have not already, and we have gotten an excellent response for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Community survey, about 330 responses, heading towards our goal of 405 responses, or about 5% of the community. So thank you, and please continue to share that and encourage folks to participate. Another item to note to, tomorrow we'll have a work session with City Council on special event permitting, dial, and other COVID-related items. We're going to be probably looking at making some special event decisions in the next few weeks. And there's been a lot of changes for those of you who have not been keeping close track. And it has, it has, you know, it continues to change as we've experienced through COVID last year in 2020, as far as information and guidance from the state. But, and Colleen Nielsen I see on here, and I'll allow her an opportunity, of course, to give us a more detailed update on COVID from Public Health. But for those folks wondering about, you know, what the summer might hold, we'll be having those conversations in the coming weeks regarding summer events. And with that, I will turn it over to Colleen if she's ready to give us a COVID update.
Yeah, thank you so much, Sarah. Good to be here on this Monday. And as far as, you know, the big thing that we are currently working on, as most folks know, is getting folks vaccinated. Anyone who would like a vaccine, we are having a large clinic on this Wednesday, the 7th. I will drop that into the chat here in just a few minutes. I was actually trying to pull the link and it wasn't fast enough, but we still have spots available for that clinic on the 7th. We had vaccinated almost 400 folks last Wednesday, the 31st. So that is exciting. And as you know, folks can get vaccinated at Safeway, Rocky Mountain Family Practice, as well as Savincent Health and in our surrounding counties. So right now, every person is eligible. We are out of what they were calling the phases, as you know, that took up a lot of time trying to figure out where you fit. Well, the good news is that everyone's welcome at this point in time, and we thank folks for their patience. And we also recognize, like I said, that there are other places where folks can receive it. We have put out that information, but I will drop that back into the chat. We continue to see cases across our county as well as across the state. And a lot of that is being contributed to folks feeling that, you know, the crisis is over, don't need to follow social distancing protocols, including masking. And I would just encourage folks to hang in there a little bit longer. You know, there are variants that are making their way through Colorado and in our surrounding counties. And so that seem to have some protection from the vaccine, but also are highly infectious. So we're just kind of in that wait-and-see game. But we also find that folks, as you can imagine, are tired. And so some of the folks that we have in contacting who are positive, you know, aren't as cooperative because people are tired. So we do ask that, if we do reach out, that you provide us information as best as you can so that we can ensure that we're kind of keeping it tight because we still are in this dial system. Our numbers still dictate kind of where we are. If, and right now, we're in blue. We do have, we're looking at a possible outbreak, but it shouldn't impact our dial level. But as Sarah said, there's a work session tomorrow, and we'll be working through a lot of those pieces and what we want to do locally as well. And as the governor is looking to kind of move some of the control out of the state level into local level. So we will be having that discussion tomorrow at 1 o'clock.
Thanks, Colleen. Commissioner Marcela and Fiedler, any questions for Colleen?
I don't think I have a question so much as kind of a little bit of kudos. I volunteered at the point of dispensing vaccination clinic last Wednesday, and we'll do the same again this Wednesday in the afternoon. And just want to, want to say that it was run very well by Public Health. It was very efficient. And it's, it's very easy to sign up and just come in and get your vaccination and hang out for 15 minutes. And so definitely, if nobody has plans for a vaccination and needs the link to connect with one of us to take advantage of that vaccination clinic, but it went very well. And yeah, just wanted to hear some kudos.
Thank you so much, Kyla.
Nice work. Very good. All right. If there are no other community informational items, Commissioner Fiedler? Okay, all right, just prepping. Do we have any commissioner clarifications? I have nothing.
None for me.
Okay.
Nothing, thank you.
All right, great. And with that then, we will move into the first item of new business, which is a public hearing. And I know Patty Berger is on the line here. And this public hearing is for the transfer of ownership for the property known as Saturday's Gas and Retail and a number of other things sold at Saturday's down in the southern part of the county or past southern part of Leadville. Patty, do you want to help guide us through the process here for this public hearing?
I can.
That would be great. Please.
Oh, I think the first step we need to do is open the public hearing.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Equally slow on the mute button.
Commissioner Fiedler, do you second?
I'll second.
All right, great. Any further discussion?
None for me.
Okay, hearing none?
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And then we just need to explain what this is.
Yeah, that would be great. And Patty, can you also let us know all the postings for the process have been met? Is that correct?
That's correct. The first step is the applicant has to make application to the county, which is the governing, the licensing authority for the local jurisdiction. So, and the next step is the posting, it was made to the county clerk on the appropriate forms. The public hearing was noticed at the premises more than 10 days ago, as prescribed by law, and in the Herald Democrat in the April 1st edition of the Herald Democrat. The applicant has submitted fingerprints to CBI for the background check. We have not received any negative results or any, that we should be alarmed in any way with his background check. All of the fees have been paid in full. I have not received any written comments at all concerning the transfer of ownership on this license. All of the paperwork appears to be in good order. And they have applied for, and I have given them a temporary permit. I believe the closing is going to be today on the sale. And so they need to continue the operation of Saturday's, which will now be called Fast Stop 1166, Inc.
Okay. Thanks, Patty. That's really helpful. I appreciate you going through that and outlining that for us. Is the applicant here and to offer just, I guess, an introduction? I know, I don't know if that's formally part of the process, but we've done that before when we met in person.
They were going to be. Let me see if, I don't know. I don't think they're here.
Okay. I'll just give them a moment if they want to unmute, but I'm not sure that they're here either, Patty.
Okay. I spoke with them this morning, and I thought they were planning on attending, but perhaps something came up.
Okay. Okay, great. And Patty, my curiosity, with the various, you know, liquor license and sales and gun ammo sales, are there, are there multiple, all of those things are included in your diligence, correct? Through the background checks?
The background check is for his, for the person that's applying for this. The store is not. It's just the individual that's seeking this liquor license.
Okay, so the, is the transfer for the liquor license alone right now that we're requesting?
It is.
Okay.
That's all that this office is responsible for, is the liquor portion.
Okay. All right, commissioners, do you have any questions for Patty?
I was just curious, and sorry, I shouldn't have asked this like before this item come up. I think this is the first one of these I've come through. Are, are there any grounds for denying? I mean, I'm not, I don't see any here, but I'm just sort of curious, like what, when we would ever deny a transfer like this?
That's entirely up to you because this is the first step. They have to get your approval in order for me to send this on to liquor enforcement in Denver.
Okay.
The applicant is of good character. That's when you originally license an establishment. It usually comes back, the first requirement to their character of the applicant. The needs of the, of the surrounding area. It's not within a church or a school within the allotted square footage. Those still apply even with the transfer of ownership. But mostly on a transfer of ownership, it's on the character of the applicant.
Okay, so just the background check. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Patty. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, no other questions for the county clerk. I'll entertain a motion, a decision.
Sarah, I think before we do that, do we want to make sure that there's no members of the public to give any public comment during the public hearing?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Marcela.
Yeah.
Okay, we did ask for the applicant to give a statement or offer an opportunity. Are there any members of the public that are here to speak at the hearing for the transfer of the liquor licensing for the business known as Saturday's? Please go ahead and unmute or raise your hand. Okay, I'll give just another moment. I'm not seeing anybody.
This is Patty again. I would recommend approval of this license if, if I can make that recommendation.
Thanks, Patty. Okay, any, go ahead, Commissioner Marcela.
Oh, no, I just, if we're ready, I will gladly make a motion.
I think it looks like there are no members of the public that are with us interested in commenting in the public hearing for the transfer of the liquor license for the entity known as Saturday's. And so if nobody would like to unmute and make a comment, I think you can, go ahead, Commissioner Marcela. Thank you.
All right. I will make a motion that we approve the transfer of ownership for the property known as Saturday's for the liquor license.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
None for me.
All right, nothing for me either. Thank you so much. And with that, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, very good. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of this regular meeting.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
All right, and we will move on to new business. And item one on our agenda is renewal of the marijuana, retail marijuana cultivation facility known as Gem Dutch Acres LLC. Again, Patty, as county clerk, can you make a comment into the good standing of Gem Dutch Acres? I know they've been in business quite some time and come, this is a renewal that comes annually. Any, any new news for us worth noting, Patty? And you are muted, Patty. I'm sorry if... Patty, do you have any information for us on payments fees up to date? Okay. Well, seeing that nothing adverse was supplied to the board, I don't have any questions on this. This is pretty straightforward. Like I said, annual renewal. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Marcela? Might have missed you there.
Sorry.
Okay, no, no problem. All right, thank you very much. And item number two, and with us we have, it looks like a team from XL Energy. Kelly Flanagan is with us, and I'll ask her, welcome. Thanks for joining us. We asked XL to come and give us an update on their continued work of the gas projects and replacement throughout the city and county. And so Kelly, welcome. Good to see you. And would you do me a favor and take a moment to introduce your team with us today?
Yes, I will. Thank you for having us, Commissioner Mudge and Commissioner Fiedler. Nice to sort of meet you. I've seen your name on an email, and now I can see your face, sort of. Look forward to an in-person meeting. And Commissioner Marcela, nice to see you as well. I am joined today with a small contingent from XL to go over our gas replacement project with you. Ife Jennings is the new area manager for Lake County. She started with the company in November when I moved into the Director of Community Relations position. I'm really thrilled to have her, and I think that you will enjoy working with her as well. I have Samantha Ogden, who is with our engineering team, and she has been really instrumental in the design and all of the engineering associated with this project. And then I think that you've met, or at least have heard Josh Solis. He is our communications consultant who's been working with us on this project. We have a few slides, if you don't mind, that we'll go through and give you an update. And, and I think Ife will kind of run through that PowerPoint presentation. Please feel free to ask any questions if you've got them, and you can interrupt or put them in the chat, and we will do our best to answer them all for you. So Ife, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to come and speak to you today and give you a quick overview of the project. And what we will do today is give you just an overview of the project, give you more information on this construction impacts that will have, what we've made as far as progress with the construction, safety, and more communication. And as always, we're grateful to have this opportunity to discuss this project with you in advance of construction activities beginning for 2021. As you're all aware, we've been working on this project for the past couple of years, and we appreciate the working relationship our team has with the commissioners and with their staff. So Kelly has kind of given you an overview of our project team, of the ones that we have available today. But these are a list of the individuals that are working throughout the duration of the project on this project. Although we're here to discuss the natural gas project, we want to keep you informed of other projects so that you have awareness of what we have planned in your county. So just to give you a quick overview, we have the electric work at the Royal York Leadville, our wildfire protection program, and our wildfire team will be participating in the Lake County Table Talk this exercise tomorrow morning. And then we also have the routine maintenance on our electric and extra gas infrastructure. And as you know, we will continue to coordinate these projects with Lake County and the city of Leadville as they come up. And so a little bit about the project, since 2019, we've been working to replace the natural gas distribution system in Leadville North and the city of Leadville that reaches to the, that is reaching to the end of its useful life. And each year, we plan to work through the spring through fall during our allowable timeframe set forth by our permits. We expect this project to continue through 2024. And this project is being constructed as a part of our commitment to system revitalization. And the project will allow us to extend the lifeline, the lifetime of the natural gas infrastructure serving the community as we, and will continue to allow us to provide safe and reliable natural gas services to Lake County. A little bit of what to expect during our construction time, we will install the natural gas line primary through Boring. And Boring involves using a machine to create an underground pathway through which we can install the natural gas line. Boring allows us to reduce surface impact to the roadways, which we know is important to Lake County and the city of Leadville. And we will only do open trenching as needed. During construction, we will have our traffic control measures in place to close sections of roads or sidewalks as needed. Existing mirrors on the north and drip edge sides of buildings will be relocated to the other side to promote melt and help avoid meter damage from snow and ice slides. We will enter the customer homes and businesses connected to them to, for the newly installed natural gas line. During the process, we will use our, of course, appropriate personal protective equipment. For those areas that are temporarily interrupted during the natural gas service, we will coordinate with individuals that are located in those locations to accomplish this work. And we will work to limit natural gas service interruptions to less than one day. We'll also relocate the natural gas meters as necessary. And before leaving projects, we will restore the natural gas lines and re-light appliances as appropriate. Towards the end of the year, we will restore work areas to pre-construction, pre-construction conditions. Keeping in mind that this restoration requires specific weather conditions, mostly warmer or hot climates or drier climates, and some areas may be left temporarily, temporarily restored at the end of the construction season as we wait for the optimum weather conditions for restoration activities. But please keep in mind, we will return to restore those temporarily restored areas as soon as the conditions allow us to do so.
Thanks, Ife. Can I interrupt for a moment?
Sure. Yep. Do you want me to go back to slide?
Sure, sure. Um, yeah, just some of the, I'm sure you've been, I think you've been working with and having regular check-in meetings. If not through the winter, then I suppose those would start up again with Public Works. And I appreciate you noting restoring those areas back to pre-construction conditions. Do you have some, you have some areas that you will also be revisiting from last year's work?
Yes, we do. I only have a few properties that we will be restoring from last year's work, yeah.
Okay, thanks. And also, I know, and again, maybe more detailed conversation with Public Works, the, the initial intent of the project was to have primarily, primarily Boring done. That proves really hard up in the mountains here, and there was quite a bit more trenching. So I will just say, maybe the areas have some different conditions that might allow for that to happen. But as, as best we can, you know, communicate to folks in the public in those neighborhoods, if and when trenching may be occurring as, I mean, I might presume as a likelihood, that would be ideal.
Yeah. Kelly, do you have anything to add to that? Sometimes Kelly is problem. So we'll just move on to give you a brief update of what we accomplished in 2020. So we're pleased to announce we completed our natural gas work in Leadville North. We have, as we talked about earlier just a little bit, we have less than 10 properties in Leadville North where final restoration remains outstanding. And we will return to complete that landscape and soft surface restoration at these properties in the coming months, once the weather allows for us to do so. We also completed construction along Highway 24 near lots of businesses, and we've coordinated closely with CDOT, CDOT's Highway 24, to reduce overall community impact. I'll pause a little bit to see if you have any additional questions about some of the work in 2020. So great question.
Ife, this is Mayor Lobby. I also wanted to thank XL because in the midst of all that, you guys also did our alleys on the east side of Harrison Avenue from Ninth Street to Third Street. And that was a huge benefit to us, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So next, maybe a little delay here. Sorry, I might have gone too far trying to. So this year's activities, you'll see here in the green is the work area for us this year. So we'll be between Harris Avenue, a little bit to the west. And it'll fall between Hazel Street to the east, up to East Second Avenue to the south, and then the Leadville city boundaries to the north. And so we will work along Elm Street, just east of McWhethy Drive to Leader Street. And construction, of course, work will occur during allowable workdays based on our permits. So as things move towards a level of normalcy this year, as individuals receive their vaccine, as you discussed earlier for COVID-19... as you discussed earlier for COVID-19, our team has awareness that this year will maybe look different than things did in 2020. And so, you know, individuals will likely be commuting to work and school more frequently and businesses will hopefully be CMR traffic and events will attract tourists to Lake County to see the beauty of the county has to offer. So because of these changes, we want to be aware of our, of our construction activities and be mindful of coordinating with the city and county, especially related to area events. This year, the project route will be outside of the typical event detour routes. And if you have any events coming up that we should be aware of, please let us know. I heard you mention earlier that you'll be having these discussions pretty soon about events that are coming up in the area. So we want to make sure that we're mindful of those events as they come up. Our contractor site wise has also started to schedule meter relocation and relights within the project areas, which will continue through 2021. Work is scheduled to begin in May 2021 after restrictions from, for construction and roadways have been lifted. Any questions?
Ife, I just wonder, are, are typical reroute with any events that may, and again, this year, like you said, you know, there's, there's really not, it's likely not to be typical summer events. But, but usually we have some road closures along Highway 24 and CDOT, of course, reroutes and detours those up onto Poplar in that east side of town area that you've identified as the boundary for this year's work. Will, I, I suppose that you all have coordinated with CDOT on, I mean, potentially having an alternate, alternate route other than that east side?
Yeah, that's a great question. We can definitely, I can circle back with our project manager on the team just to confirm that those conversations have happened. But I'm sure that, you know, with some of the work that we're doing ahead of time that they've had those conversations. But I'll definitely circle back and confirm for you, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
So the peach area represents our anticipated future work area from 2024 to 20, 2022 to 2024. And we, of course, will continue to identify additional areas each year. I'm going to communicate those anticipated work areas in advance to you and this type of meeting and other stakeholders that are in the area that will be mostly impacted by them. So again, the purple area was my work from 2020. Our upcoming work in 2021 is the green area, and then the peach area represents the anticipated work for 2022 through 2024. And as you know, public safety is the foundation of all the work that we do and the safety of the public influences every decision that we're making as a whole, as a company, but also as we construct this project as well. Our projects are designed to meet the federal, state and company safety standards and we proactively implement safety measures during installation and operation of our natural gas infrastructure. Our employees and subcontractors are taking COVID-19 specific precautions when construction projects are underway. So a little bit about our public outreach in 2020. In 2020, we had a comprehensive public outreach approach to keep the community up to date on project activities, including our Project Millers that went out, regular meetings with local officials. We hosted one public meeting in English and in Spanish and invited all affected stakeholders for the project. This meeting was covered, covered what to expect through 2024. Our regular updates and correspondence on the project website, hotline and emails. We also had ads in the local paper. We made a commitment to responding to any constituent concerns within one business day. And what we received in 2020 mostly as feedback from constituents and stakeholders was information wanting to receive natural gas services or regarding restoration activities were the two things that kind of popped up for us throughout 2020, whenever we received communication from the public. In 2021, we will continue to regularly communicate with our stakeholders in a variety of public outreach methods. One, continuing our, of course, website that we have that talks about the project email and the hotline. We were also sending out construction notifications through venues such as Millers, ads in the local newspaper and subscriber-based email updates. And then, of course, we'll have regular meetings with our key stakeholders such as yourselves. We do not plan to host a public open house meeting this year, but will communicate with affected stakeholders multiple times during the project. And that's mostly because from the first meeting, we did communicate the project through 2024. And then we will continue to engage the audience with materials that are in both English and Spanish so that we make sure that we're communicating through both avenues. What we're excited about is that as we continue our community commitments, our customers, of course, are driving the, driving force behind all that we do in the community. And we have a deep commitment to supporting our communities that we're proud to serve. And so we will continue to invest in Lake County, including our efforts recently with Great Outdoors Leadville with the most recent $10,000 grant to support the great work that they're doing in your community. So we look forward to opportunities to continue to partner in any way that we can, that makes sense, and, and learn more about some of the great work that you're doing in the community and how we can best partner. Our team is available, of course, for questions at any time. You can contact myself as the area manager in community relations, as well as Trevor Glass, who is our project manager that will be onsite, will work with our staff that's onsite very closely. Any questions?
Ife, this is Commissioner Marcela. I just have one, one quick question. Hey, if, I had a couple of business owners contacting me about a couple concerns. Is, is it best for them to get in touch with somebody like Trevor Glass? That's here, that's on the ground, working on the project, if they have any of those concerns on a day-to-day basis?
Yeah.
With subcontractors?
We can talk to Trevor. You can also go through either the website or the hotline, since we're still committed to responding with them. One day, they can also call me and I can make sure we get in contact with the right person on the team.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Michael Irwin is our Public Works Director. Any questions from Public Works? At the moment? I don't hear any. Thanks so much, Ife. It was, it was great to recap that. And I also think, you know, we'll try to do our best as well to, to kind of bring this regularly. Push folks towards the resources for communications and be available for any questions that might be. The board can be available for that as well. As you see, Mayor Lobby is on here, and I know the city, you guys have been working really closely on the big Royal York project. So hopefully we have a good stream or, or channel of communication going through 2021.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and update you on this project. Please let us know if you need anything from us.
Definitely. And, and I'm really glad to hear. Thanks for mentioning that you're going to join the tabletop tomorrow with the wildfire planning that's, that's starting here. I'm, I'm eager to get information from XL and include those valued assets in our mapping, which will help us target mitigation. Thanks. Any other comments or questions from commissioners for the XL team here?
None for me. Just, yeah, thanks for the update.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Will you all be holding?
Is there any way we could?
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, Tara.
Go right ahead, Kayla. That's all right.
Ife, is there any way that we could have a copy of your PowerPoint to put on our website potentially?
Yeah. I will send that over. Should I send it to you, Commissioner Marcela, who would be the best person to listen to?
You can, you, either one of us, that's fine. You can just send it to me and I can, you know, I can be sure to shoot that over to our IT staff to get that posted for us.
Okay, great.
Thanks so much. All right, and we'll forward that on to the EDC as well. There was a request there in the chat for a copy of it to share and act as a liaison and information resource.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, you bet. Any other questions or clarifications for the XL team? Thanks again for joining us. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. All right, Ife, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good one.
You too. All right, and now we'll move on to our next item, number three. We have tourism panel contracts. So we have, as is laid out in A, B and C, we have Children's Communications Market to Market and Adam Ducharme. The first two are typically annual renewals. Mission to Market is an agency that works through the Colorado Tourism Office. And Dave Santucci has been working with our tourism panel currently. This contract, let's see if I can start sharing. Okay. So this is a annual renewal of the contract for Mission to Mission, or sorry, Mission to Market. It's a 3,000 monthly contract approved and vetted by the tourism panel, operating within their budget. And I have no questions or further comments on the contract. Commissioners, do you have anything for me?
No, thank you.
Okay. And then.
I, I didn't, thank you then. Yeah, it seemed pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Okay, and then this, the second one for Children's Communications is also an annual, and this is a 4,000 monthly, again, an expense. And as you can see, outlined objectives and deliverables that will be in effect through January 21, 2022. 4,000 months is approved and requested by the tourism panel, operating, which is within the budget of their lodging dollars as well. And then the third is a shorter scope engagement with Adam Ducharme for, who's a videographer doing videos for the tourism panel at a cost of 10,000. It looks like there's 15 videos, and those will be used on our various social media outlets. Again, contract reviewed and approved within the tourism panel budget by the tourism panel. Any questions? Any other questions?
I'll just, as Commissioner Fiedler, just make the comment, I appreciate that the services are listed out very clearly in terms of the deliverables and sort of performance of services. So thanks for doing a good contract.
Great. Thanks. All right, if there's no other question, questions, excuse me, happy to entertain a motion individually for the contracts, if you'd like. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Mission to Market contract.
So moved? Or, sorry, do you need that read out?
Nope, that's great. You got it. Okay, motion and second, any further discussion on the Mission to Market approval? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Children's Communications contract, contract with the tourism panel.
So moved?
Okay, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I know Commissioner Marcela is having, okay, having difficulty with the wind and internet connection. Thanks, Kayla. And lastly, for tourism panel contracts, I'll entertain a motion for the scope of work with videography with Adam Ducharme for the tourism panel.
So moved?
I'll second. Okay, any further discussion? Nope, all right.
No, thank you.
None, very good. All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, thanks very much. And moving on to our next agenda item, tourism panel appointments. There were two vacancies and spots on the tourism panel. Their terms expired at the end of 2020. We did post this as well as some other community board opportunities to participate and submit letters of interest for placement in these vacancies. The two tourism panel appointments requested by the tourism panel are for Sarah Edwards and Colleen Schweiger. And I don't have any questions or comments. Colleen, Sarah's a, would be a new member and Colleen would be reappointed to the board. If there are no questions, I'll.
No questions for me, thank you.
No questions here.
All right, excellent. I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of Sarah Edwards, that's S-A-R-A, and Colleen Schweiger to the tourism panel board.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Very good. All right, and item number five, Airport Advisory Board appointments. Commissioner Marcela and/or Michael Irwin.
Yeah, we have. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So we have two openings right now for the Airport Advisory Board, and we have two applications. We have one letter of interest from Jeffrey Fine, who currently resides in Dillon and has 55 years of experience in general aviation, who is interested in a seat on the board. And we also have a letter of interest from John O'Connor from Breckenridge. So he has some experience with flight school and has worked at municipal airports. So I don't think there's any, any question. The Airport Advisory Board had both of them attend the airport board meeting last month in March on the 13th, and both were very excited about the areas of expertise and experience that both of these candidates will bring to the Airport Advisory Board.
Excellent. That sounds great. Now, the Airport Advisory Board has been really helpful over the last couple of years. And with the transitions and changes out there, that's sure to continue to be appreciated. Any other, I don't have any questions for you, Commissioner Marcela, on those appointments. Maybe if you'd just make that motion to remind me of their names, as I did not get to write those down.
I will make a motion that we appoint Jeffrey Fine and John O'Connor to the Airport Advisory Board.
I'll second that motion.
All right, thanks. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none.
None for me, thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, excellent. Thanks, Commissioner Marcela. And then last, on our new business, we have. And then last, on our new business, we have item number six, which is the Patagonia Electronic Health Record Purchase. I see Colleen Nielsen on here and/or Commissioner Marcella. Do you want to give us a little bit of update and background on this item, please?
Sure, I'll let Colleen or Chris jump in with any questions that they may, or any questions that you might have that they might be able to help us with. Legal has reviewed the contract with Patagonia Electronic Health Records, and so this is going to be paid out of EPR funding. Is that correct, Colleen?
So we are actually going to break some funding between immunization COVID money and emergency preparedness COVID money. And then we have the ability to maintain the contract through our regular grants in both immunizations and family planning.
Okay. And the electronic health records really are for the purpose of vaccinations. Is that correct, Colleen?
So with this particular health record, we are able to do all of our immunizations as well as family planning, which currently we paper chart, and then we have to input them into the state database. This particular system has the ability to connect to the state databases, so it truly is an electronic health record. We would like to use it for all of our services in the office, which is exciting in that respect. But, but yes, initially, immunizations and the way that we're able to do some of the funding, the initial funding pieces is because it has what they call a mass vaccination, kind of, I don't know the right word, but upload, I think, would probably be where we'd be able to enter everything in, and, you know, one time, and it uploads into the state system as we continue to do vaccination clinics, and that's, you know, invaluable. We do flu clinics, you know, in the fall as well, and to have single entry as well as just the ability to have all the information in one place that everyone can access, including a scheduler, is going to bring us up to the 21st century, if you will, in healthcare.
Thanks, Colleen. I believe this will also increase our efficiency in public health by not having to paper chart and electronic chart health records, correct?
Yes, super great point, Kayla. I think that is an exciting piece, too, as the demands from public health continue to expand in all different areas. You know, obviously COVID being our initial, but there's definitely more opportunity on the horizon to expand services. It just helps us to do this better and more efficiently.
Cool. Sarah or Jeff, do you, either of you have any questions for Chris or Colleen or myself?
I just had one, one question. With going to electronic health records, are though, I, I guess the question is sort of looking down the road, if we were ever to choose a different vendor, how does sort of like portability of those records work?
That is a great question, Jeff. I know that there's some opportunity to do, what are they called, CSV files? If you will, I don't, I think that's the right one, and then upload them into another system. You know, obviously, at this point in time, we're not looking to do anything, but I think that's a super valuable question, and I will actually find that answer for you.
Okay, great. Nothing urgent. I think, you know, it's probably an issue with whatever vendor we might have gone with, but just, you know, you hear horror stories of trying to make one system talk to another, so it'd be good to try to anticipate that.
Yeah, and I will share, there's a lot of systems out there. I mean, even when I just think of healthcare in general and what we have between here at our local hospital, in the central system, in the VALE health system, none of them talk to each other at all. And so, I mean, I think that's an issue we'll bump into regardless of what that looks like, but the good thing is we do have access to medical records for those particular entities that interact with what's called COREO, which allows us to access medical records. So I'll also look into that as well.
Okay. Appreciate the combining of funding to, to make that happen, Colleen, and kind of along the lines of Jeff's questions. Presume that there's maybe some sort of like state contracting or pricing that, that as a local agency we are available, take advantage of. But with this contract, I believe, if I read correctly, was five years. Is that right?
No, Commissioner Majes, I had unmuted because I wanted to point out a couple of material changes since the version. One of the things that we did negotiate with them on was the term of the contract, because they wanted a pretty much non-cancelable five-year term. And we negotiated that, that down to two years. And one of the reasons that I was pretty adamant about that, well, twofold, one, that it, you know, that type of multi-year obligation spanning more than one BOCC board, and then the second was because of the nature of this type of software and such, this is software changing so rapidly, being locked into something for five years right now might not be in the best interest of the county. So we did get it down. It's a two-year term. And while they weren't willing to concede on the county's ability to terminate for convenience, there is a non-appropriation provision in there. So it's, it's one of those things where if it ends up that, that the county, you know, has emergent needs and ends up needing the funding somewhere else, or the grant funding's not there, you do have the opportunity to terminate in less than two years with 30 days' notice.
Thanks for that clarification, Chris. Appreciate it. Well, I don't have any other questions for public health or Colleen. I will entertain a motion for the approval to engage with the Patagonia Electronic Health Record Purchase.
So moved?
Second.
Right. Any further discussion?
No, thanks.
No, thank you.
Great. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. And that concludes our business. I know the Economic Development Corporation would like a chance to make a public comment, but first I'll just have us go through and do our final formal action here to approve bills and payroll for pay period ending March 26, 2021.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Majes, can you repeat? But you broke up quite a bit on my end.
Oh, my, I'm sorry. Yep, no, I, I just wanted to, the economics about, Marla's here with the Economic Development Corporation, and I would like a chance for, to make an update and a public comment. But before that, I just would like to kind of finish our formal action with one last item. And I'll entertain an approval for bills and payroll for pay period ending March 26, 2021.
So moved?
Okay, Jeff seconds. I see the mouth go. Any further discussion? All right. All right, hearing none? All right, great. Thank you. Hearing no further discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Great. Thank you. Hi, Marla.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thank you. Real quick update for something that you'll see a lot of emails about here this week, next week, following week. With the Colorado Department of Labor and with the Colorado Workforce Center, we're fortunate enough to have a virtual job fair on May the 7th. And the software is absolutely amazing for the employer side and then also for the job seeker. And this can include anyone, nonprofits, education, businesses, government entities, to participate. And then the job seekers will have this opportunity. More to come on that, but we secured, and it's free, I will say that. It's new software through AdWorks that they have been working with, with the state, and we're excited to be one of the rural counties that they wanted to launch this with. So I will send you a bunch of emails in the near future and help us to promote it out to the public. And then in an upcoming meeting, I would love to come back and kind of share some of the highlights of this last quarter, but specifically on those that didn't get to participate the other night in the community community, what's it called, all the state of the community, I'll get it out. Some data that we have collected from our small business owners and all the support that the city, the county, our organization did through CARES Act funding, it's pretty amazing. And I'd love, I don't want to share the number here, love to come back and share and, and give you some updates on some projects. But May 7th, Job Fair, help us promote it. I'll send you some additional information. Thank you.
Thanks, Marla. Well, yeah, if you want to share any kind of flyer that you might have, we can get that up on the website as well.
Perfect.
It's good to see you healthy and.
At the office, working crazy.
Excellent, excellent. Nice. All right. Commissioners, any questions for Marla? All right.
I don't think so. Thank you, Marla. Good to see you.
I'm excited about this job fair. This is a great opportunity for us to recruit some additional employees and, and find people that want to transfer some jobs. So, and the rural part to this, there's only like three other counties that are getting access to this software. So I might have you guys do a little thank you to Mark Abitzel at some point, because I've been harassing him like crazy to have access to this, and you're gonna, it's amazing. It's, it's like going to a virtual job fair or a virtual expo. So you set up a booth as an employee, and it's, it's pretty cool.
Very cool. Very cool. Thanks for sharing and organizing. Appreciate it. All right, commissioners, nothing else on the agenda? Any, any last minute comments from the board?
No, thank you.
No, thanks.
All right. Hearing nothing, we will adjourn at 2:03. Thanks so much.